Good morning. Thank you for your attendance. I will call the meeting of the Air Pollution Control Board to order. The first thing on the agenda this morning is public hearing. Would the staff, Police Committee have made an agreed board order with American Centennial Republican, Mr. King?
Thank you Chairman Hill. The district brings a VOC NOx Ract Plan with ASRC to the board for its consideration. The American Synthetic Rubber Company operates pursuant to a title cloud permit, and they have applied to construct and operate three natural gas-fired boilers, each rated 200 million BTU per hour. District Regulation 6.42, Reasonably Available Control Technology, for volatile organic compound and nitrogen oxide emitting Facilities requires the application of Ract to processes emitting VOCs and NOx. Because of the past ozone issues in Louisville, we have a regulation that requires the application of Ract to major sources of VOCs and NOx. As you're aware, we have the current designation of non-attainment for ozone, so this is still a very important rule for us. The ASRC is applied to construct two or three natural gas-fired boilers with the overall intent of removing the existing boilers, two of which are coal-fired. We've proposed that VOC Ract be good combustion operating practices. Add-on controls are not utilized to reduce VOCs through combustion processes, so applying this complete efficient combustion will minimize VOC emissions. The facility would be required to follow the tune-up and maintenance requirements found in the Federal Maximum Achievable Gas Control Technology, or MAC, regulation for boilers. And that rule is designed more to control toxic pollutants, but again, that good complete combustion will also minimize non-toxic VOCs. The more important part is the NOx Ract, the nitrogen oxide Ract. For this, the district proposes a limit of 0.04 pounds per million BTU on a 30-day rolling average period. To give something to compare to, the current NOx Ract for the facility requires 0.5 pound per million BTU per hour, per million BTU or less for coal boilers, and 0.2 pound per million BTU for the gas boilers. So this is quite a bit lower than those limits which were set almost 20 years ago. This will be accomplished with the use of low NOx burner technology, so it's not an add-on control device, but it's really controlling how well that combustion occurs. ASRC under this proposal would be required to conduct annual NOx testing for two years. If the facility is found to be in compliance with that testing, the performance check is required every two years. The district recommends that the board adopt the agreement as proposed. And as a note, these new boilers will go through the construction permitting process, which will look at all rules, all requirements, monitoring, record keeping to go with that. We hope the public noticed that for instance. We'd like to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor King. Would the representative of American Centennial Rubber Company like to make a statement? Does anyone from the public wish to make a statement? Are there any questions by board members? So, we have another amendment we need to address, and that is the Regulations 1.08, Administrative Procedures, Version 14, Regulations 2.08. This has to do with the fees. Version 28, Mr. Gary.
Thank you, Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, the district brings for your consideration today amendments to Regulation 1.08 Administrative Procedures and Regulation 2.08 Fees. Regulation 1.08, Version 14 makes amends to bring the administrative procedures for requesting open records into alignment with the Kentucky Open Records Act, and clarifies different purposes and procedures for public hearings and the procedures for amending our rules. Regulation 2.08, Version 28, would allow the district to refuse to process additional notifications for asbestos demolition or renovation projects where the applicant has unpaid invoices more than 60 days overdue, or has unpaid late fees, or outstanding court judgments owed to the district. If the district receives no comments during the comment period, it recommends the regulations as amended be adopted by the board. Thank you.
Does anyone from the board wish to make a statement? Does anyone else want to make a statement? Are there any questions by any board members regarding this amended regulations? There have been no further statements of questions of this public hearing as adjourned. So, we will move into our four-week agenda. We do have a forum. Mr. Taylor, do we have any introductions this morning?
Yes, Chairman Hill, and we do. Happy to introduce the new employee, Zachary Straney. He is a new engineer one in our industrial compliance area.
What? Thank you. Public recognitions.
No, sir.
Both of you have, the Policy Committee and the Director Board minutes have been distributed in advance of this meeting for your due. Are there any corrections to the Policy Committee minutes, or to the Director Board meeting minutes? And the public hearing meetings? Are there any questions regarding the distributed minutes? Hearing none? The hearing minutes are approved, and so are the Director Board meeting minutes are approved. Thank you. And the Policy Committee minutes. We have to, do we have any public comments this morning?
No, sir.
Any unfinished business?
No, Chairman.
New business. With the new business, you've heard the district recommendation. Is there a motion to adopt the amended agreed board order with American Centennial Rubber? You get a motion from the board member? Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion regarding the agreed board order with American Centennial Rubber? We cannot, we can vote, but Mr. Sullivan, the boss chair here, will recuse himself from not voting on this, a American Centennial Rubber defendant regarding his family's involvement with a nonprofit that raises fund in the community. So, to make sure we have no conflict, he has accused himself of not voting on this agreed board order. But we do have enough to vote. Board members, you ready to vote on the agreed board order with American Centennial? All opposed? As having the agreed board order with American Centennial is adopted. We also have proposed amendments to Regulations 1.08 Administrative Procedures, Version 14, and Regulations 2.08 Fees, Versions 28. Now, you've heard the district recommendation. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed amendment to Regulations 1.08 and 2.08? Can I get a motion from a board member? Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay, dey have it, and the regulations are adopted. So, next on the agenda is the committee report of Mr. Steve Sullivan. He's the chairman of the Policy Committee.
All right, thank you. The Policy Committee of the Louisville Air Pollution Control Board met on October 16, 2019, and during that meeting, the committee approved that the district proposed amendments to Regulation 1.08 and 2.08 be released for a 45-day rolling average period. That's it.
Thank you very much. We down to staff reports, Mr. Taylor.
Thanks, Chairman Hill. So, this morning, I will attempt to keep my remarks brief. We have a presentation later. Part of the director's report, I think, will find a great interest, and so I want to make sure there's enough time for that presentation, and then for adequate question and answer. However, there are a few items that I do want to bring to the board's attention. Concerning EPA budget, which is always of concern, 103 and 105 grant funding, as it stands now, is proposed to be held at the current levels, and so 103 and 105 are much part of our funding mechanism, and our understanding at this point is that it will have the same level of funding that we've had in past years. Of course, this is also dependent on getting any final budget approved at the federal level. So, good news, and we'll wait to hear the final on that. The Louisville Sustainability Council held its 2019 Louisville Sustainability Summit November 1st. Rachel Hamilton, myself, Tom Norr, Jamie Janka, and...
Tori?
Tori, oh, sorry. Tori and Brad were at that meeting. And Missy. It was held at the Louisville Zoo. This is an annual meeting by the Louisville Sustainability Council. Our featured speaker this year was Dr. Robert Brinkton, and his topic was entitled "Seven Ways to Advance Your Sustainability Agenda in a Time of Change." Really very thought-provoking discussion, some of the issues facing us due to climate change. There was also a panel discussion on local issues related to climate change issues in Louisville, and on that panel were Mary Ann Dewall, who's chief Louisville forward, Cindy Sullivan of Tree Louisville, Anita Gaxon, and the audience this morning from West Jefferson County Community Task Force, and also from the NAACP Climate Change and Environmental Justice for Kentucky Representative, and then also Kurt Barrett of Louisville Energy Alliance. It was just an opportunity for them to discuss some of the issues that are specific to Louisville, and then also to entertain questions from the audience. Again, it was a good event, and an annual event, so I encourage folks that they have the opportunity to attend in the future. Rachel and I also attended the Mayor's Strategic Planning Retreat that was held, and so it hasn't had the final live, but I feel like it's important that I give you the five of the seven, five priority areas that the mayor has established, and they are public safety, climate change, affordable housing, anti-displacement work, youth involved by O2 alignment, and the transition of the youth retention services. As you know, this is a budget-constrained retention services for youth in Louisville being turned over to the state. And then something that I'm very happy that they included, something that APCD has made known to HR that we discussed with leadership, and that is they had one of the priority areas, the succession planning, recruitment, and retention. And that is a particular problem to the district, more so than some other agencies. So, just very happy that that has made it to the top of the Mayor's Strategic Plan, because it's an important issue that needs to be addressed. The other important thing about this in difference from prior years with the Mayor's Strategic Plan is that part of the process is to develop the SMART goals, timeline, and supportable KPIs, which are key performance indicators. And we also created within each of these sections, a hopper of things that are directly related, but things that need to also be addressed, and make sure that we get to. But more importantly, the plan is to keep those working groups for each of those sections together to work on these throughout the year, and that has not taken place in the past. And so, one of the things that you always want to guard, again, when you do strategic plans, is to do a plan that simply sits on the shelf, nobody takes a look at it, nothing is done. And so, I think they've seen that. Part of this year's strategic planning event is going to allow for us to stay involved in that process, to make changes as necessary and needed in the strategic plan, and keep the folks who have to implement this plan involved in the process. So, very, very happy about that. Rachel and I also had the opportunity to attend a meeting at the Shoney Library, and it was a discussion of Chickasaw and Shoney Park. Presentation by Representative Metro Parks, and the discussion was about the addition of services and programs. It had long been offered at other parks throughout the community, including Jefferson Forest, that will now be offered at Shoney and Chickasaw in West Louisville. So, it was just incredible to hear about it. We're talking about such things as canoeing and archery, and a lot of those services were available. Children in West Louisville had traveled to Jefferson Forest or the other parks in order to take advantage of them. The plan now is to have those same, everything that's offered at other parks be offered at Shoney and Chickasaw. So, just, I think, a great opportunity to address some of the equity issues that are occurring in our community. In addition to that, there are also going to be a multi-purpose building in Shoney. The drawings are impressive, it will be available for community use, and then it will also be available to provide some of those services and programs that occur elsewhere. They'll have a site down in West Louisville and Shoney Park for that community to take advantage of those programs and services. The other thing that was talked about was the cleanup of Chickasaw Pond. So, that has long been an issue in West Louisville. There was known contamination in that pond, and so the fact that they are now planning to clean it up and restock it with fish is a blessing. I remember fishing there when I was a kid. I also remember when they put up signs that said, "You can no longer fish there." So, it is a step in the right direction for them to do that. Now, there was some areas of contention because of the past pollution in that pond, and the community had concerns about cleaning out, because part of the plan is, they dredge the pond, make it deep enough to have fish in it again. They plan to take that settlement that's dredged out and do some leveling and some other landscaping work within the park. And so, the community had concerns that they were putting contaminated soil in those areas. That soil has been tested, and the folks who do that have said that they are at safe limits. But the important thing about this conversation was, from my point of view, was the fact that they are committed to having some additional discussions with the community or other issues that the community brought up. And so, very pleased that they will continue that discussion, they will address some of those issues that the community is having, and the fact that this is going to move forward, I think is going to be a benefit to West Louisville community, and I think they'll get all of the questions that the community has answered before they move forward. There was also a meeting that I was unable to attend. I was at a conference, but it was with California Neighborhood of Soul Change, MSD, APCD, and this meeting was with Heaven Hill, and this was to address a multitude of issues from that community related to Heaven Hill operations. Everything from odors from the sewers, from the Heaven Hill spillage of fluid into the sewer system, noises at night that come from the operations at the plant, to the mold on their homes. And so, there was a long list of things that the community wanted to address, and they had the opportunity to do so with Heaven Hill. I spoke with the lady who was representing the California communities in their hearing, Ms. Delana Walker, and she had a follow-up meeting with Heaven Hill where they confirmed what they heard were the issues that the community had expressed at that meeting. So, she was able to make sure that they understood those concerns and issues, and she's getting back with Heaven Hill, or Heaven Hill to get back with them, to address out, to tell them how they plan to address those concerns. The other thing, was part of that request was considerations for a public hearing on a permit that is outstanding with Heaven Hill. She asked that that be held up. Permitting manager may be aware that we can't indefinitely hold up that permit, and so I tried to reach out to Ms. Walker this week. I will make further attempts. We are more than happy to hold a public hearing if that's what the community wants. If they get answers that are satisfactory to them, and don't want to proceed with a public hearing, we can do that. We are also not opposed to having a community meeting that will include APCD, Heaven Hill, MSD, to address questions and ask and provide answers to the issues that the community has. So, we will follow up on that, we will follow the lead of the community in terms of what they think is going to work best for them, but I wanted to make you more aware that this community discussion is taking place. Since the last board meeting, we have had two Clearing the Air Workshops. On October 21st, we had Ozone Park Two, and then we had the last Clearing the Air Workshop of the 2019 year on November 18th, and this was the Star Programming Environmental Justice. I think we had a great conversation this past, this past Monday, this past Monday night. We had staff from the Louisville Metro Advanced Planning Sustainability who were able to add input to that discussion that was taking place at that meeting. We also had in attendance Councilwoman Purvis. I think she is District Five, Shoney District, at that public meeting, so there was a lot of good discussion. Michelle and her staff are already hardworking putting together workshop series for 2020. You know, I cannot stress enough that board members, as you are able to make those meetings please, make them, for folks in the audience, those are great opportunities for public engagement, to ask questions, to hear about the work that we do. And it's a very informal setting, so you can catch us one-on-one during the meeting, after the meeting, and it's just a great opportunity for community engagement. So, I really can't stress enough the fact that we would like to have as many people as possible attend those meetings. The other thing that we're going to do here is we want to work on our successes with that engagement process and engagement series, and then we want to learn from our mistakes. So, one thing, and Michelle, you can correct me, but I think we will avoid meetings during the summer. We have turnout during the summer, and that's just because so many people, so many other things going on during the summer. So, you live and you learn, but we're looking forward to this opportunity, something that we plan to continue, build on, and to grow. Want to take this opportunity, and still, this is Gaxon's thunder, but I wanted to alert the board that the West Jefferson County Community Task Force Environmental Justice Conference will take place December 3rd from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Simmons College at 1,000 South Forest Street. The theme this year is climate change, environmental justice, investing in our future. The featured speaker this year will be Jackson Patterson, who is the National Chair for the NAACP Environmental Climate Justice. As always, this is a well-attended and informative event. There is still opportunity for you to sign up. You can go to West Jefferson's webpage, or you can call 502-645-3588, and they will be able to get you signed up for attending that meeting. Again, it is always a great meeting, there's good discussion, always a lot of community folks there, and it's just a good opportunity to discuss an issue in terms of environmental justice that we all know needs to be addressed. Before I forget, I also want to thank board members Steve Sullivan and Dr. Derek Coburn for accepting their roles as co-chairs for the Multiplut stakeholder group. We appreciate that opportunity, and I think it's important that our board members are involved for a couple reasons, and primarily because we give them the opportunity, as issues that arise in terms of us addressing ozone in this community come before the board. We'll have a couple of board members who will have firsthand knowledge of the discussions that take place in that process, so they can talk about what the community said, how they felt about different issues, and bring that perspective to the board as we consider the decisions that are coming forward. So, again, just want to personally thank you guys for accepting that responsibility. Just as an update, the first Multiplut Stakeholder Group Process Meeting was held November 6th, 6th. We had great turnout for that, for that meeting, and it was just a meeting to try to bring that group up to speed, and provide as much information as possible about ozone, about the work that's already been done, a little bit about APCD and how this process can work. Additionally, there will be a second meeting today, from 3:00 to 5:00 of that group, and again, just to provide information and understanding of the issue that they're going to be discussing. And this is also a perfect segue into the last part of the director's report, which will be a presentation, ramble, as they present their findings from the office stuff and anticipated ozone study. I've brought this to your attention on numerous occasions. We have a final report, and we have an opportunity this morning from Ms. Courtney Taylor to present to the board on that issue. So, if there are no further questions from the board for me, or what I presented so far, feel free to proceed with that presentation.
Thank you very much. Courtney?
Good morning, everyone. It's my presentation. Uh-oh, the lights didn't go down. I will try to not put you all to sleep. I'm Courtney Taylor, I'm with Ramble. I had the absolute pleasure of working with the folks of the APCD over the last six months or so, and I'm thrilled to be able to present some of the key highlights from our study to you. We played a game tonight. And I also did this study, of course, with a whole group of people. So, Tija, Marco, and Frank Yarwood were some of the county contributors to the work that we're presenting today. We'll start out with just a little bit of an overview of the ozone study. For those of you not familiar with the study in the background, we'll talk in more detail about the emissions inventory. Oh, thank you. That's great. Impressed with that? All right. We'll talk in some more detail about the emissions inventory developed for the study, and then some of the findings, some of the things to be modeled with these emissions. For those of you that are not as familiar with the ozone formation study, essentially the goal of the study is to better help Louisville understand ozone formation within Louisville-Jefferson County, and then to be able to use that information to inform policy. Here for the, for the specific objectives that were done for the study, we have three objectives. This was the work that we've done. We'll be talking about objectives one and three in this abbreviated presentation today. Essentially, what we've done is we've developed an emissions inventory suitable for our ozone modeling, and then we've used that ozone model, a SASSA model, made sure it's suitable for that area, and then we've used that model as a tool to further better understand our understanding of the ozone formation globally. We'll be talking again about points one and three. So, the emissions inventory was developed specific to our area. When we're talking about emissions inventory for ozone modeling purposes, it's a comprehensive emissions inventory. We try not to recreate the wheel when we're doing ozone modeling, so we've used and leveraged available emissions data from the US EPA on the National Emissions Inventory. And this was, we selected here 2016, and selected most current emissions inventory that was available when we started this study. The 2016 beta inventory is what we've used, and we've enhanced and refined that inventory with information specific to the Louisville area, and we have a complete set of data, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. This inventory includes ozone precursors, which are important, nitrogen oxide, NOx, volatile organic compounds, VOCs, are what we use for the ozone modeling. And the emissions inventory is comprehensive, it does contain all other pollutants, including pollutants that participate in formation processes for P M 2.5. We developed and used this inventory for the ozone season, which is defined the purposes of our study from March to October. So, the emissions inventory from US EPA is listed on the left-hand side, and it contains literally all the emissions that we foresee. It includes man-made emissions as well as natural bio-molecular emissions. And on the right-hand side, we've talked about, we list the types of improvements that were made to the emissions inventory specific to the Louisville area. In particular, we enhanced the oil road emissions source vector for the Flat County area, including, we started with Oldham, Jefferson, and Bullet County in Kentucky, and then we also, Craig Nottingham has had P D P did this for us, thank you, and also Floyd and Clark County in Indiana. And mobile sources are literally like all your cars and trucks. That's, that's all the emission sources from cars and trucks, if you want to think about it that way. We also updated and refined emissions inventory where we had... We also updated and refined emissions inventory where we had completely comprehensive emissions, Louisville had completely comprehensive emissions reported to them from the industries. And this list was both gas terminals and plants, as well as publicly treated treatment works, industrial, natural gas combustion, and all three and a degree. And it's kind of a strange assortment, but these are the types of source categories where we have a full comprehensive emissions inventory on which we can update what EPA has as a default for this area. What we have here is basically a spatial plot that shows what those spatial distribution of emissions look like that were fed into the model. On the left-hand side, we have our NOX emissions inventory, and on the right-hand side, we have our VOC emissions. And on the VOC slide, you can actually see Louisville as a little bit of a high point of VOCs within the mixture of other compounds, but within the NOX emissions inventory, it combines with other turbine sources. So with that, we used that emissions inventory to conduct our ozone modeling. What you see is this movie is kind of shows the results of the ozone model. These are hourly ozone concentrations, and you can see Louisville is in the center here, and you'll be able to see the ozone form in the afternoon and then get depleted after the sun goes down and the flow of reactivity ceases. This was an event that we selected. It's the date of July 18th and 19th, and on the top, you can see the, basically, the concentrations that were measured, actually, this is a model of concentrations at Cannon's Lane site throughout July 18th and the day of the 19th. We selected this particular to show you because this is an event where the model performs well. So what we're seeing here in these plots is fairly indicative of what we expect to actually occur on July 18th and 19th. And you can see these red spots are ozone formation buildup and then subsequent transport outside of the Louisville area. Just give it a little second. So here's a buildup event, and then here you can see the ozone getting transported downward, and then the ozone depleting west of the sunsets. So that was a kind of a snapshot of what it looked like, and now what we did is we used the model to further analyze and understand what is the sensitivity of ozone to VOC emissions on one side and NOX emissions on the other side. We wanted to understand how these two different types of emissions precursors contribute to the ozone forms in our area. So what we've done in order to assess this is we did two sensitivity cases where we adjusted the emission, and we decreased the NOX emissions by 25% in one case, and we decreased the VOC emissions by 25% in the other case. So if you recall those plots of NOX and VOC emissions, imagine that the spatial distribution is the same, just the magnitude of the emissions is decreased by 25%. And I guess I should mention that we decreased only the man-made emissions, so natural VOC emissions were remain unchanged. What we are going to do with this with these sensitivity tests is we run the model with these adjusted emissions, and then we compare it with the actual emissions from 2016 and ozone results. And we do essentially a difference. So we have our reduced emissions case, and we have our actual emissions case, and we do a difference. And so when you see negative, that means that the ozone has decreased in response to decreased emissions. Okay, so, and there are cases and situations where the ozone does increase in response to decreased emissions, so it's kind of a complicated situation. We're not going to be talking about those, that perturbation, those changes here, but we're going to focus on cases where the emissions have been decreasing ozone concentration, which is important for the overall peace, and so it's appropriate. If you want more details, I forgot to mention that the board's online, so this is just the highlight version. And when we did this analysis, we focused exclusively on those days with the high ozone concentration. We were only in the top 10 ozone days, and we're doing this difference. And so what I'd first like to point out is on the left-hand side, we have a plot of the difference in the NOX sensitivity test minus our actual case, and the whole plot is blue, which indicates, as you can see, kind of from this bar, kind of legend, essentially, anything that's red would indicate an increase in ozone, but the whole plot everywhere is blue, which indicates that uniformly NOX emissions reductions were applied for low and increased in response to decreased emissions, which makes sense and is good, that's what we want to see. What I think is important to note is that the maximum decrease, that darkest blue, is actually not in Kentucky. So you can kind of see, I apologize, it's hard to see Kentucky's right here, and Louisville's right here in the center. So the maximum decrease in NOX, or in ozone concentration in response to NOX is actually outside Kentucky. And the maximum decrease is just 6.2 parts per billion, for mental note. Well, the maximum decrease in Jefferson County was a 3.8 ppd. And what we're showing on this right-hand side is a zoom-in of Jefferson County, and, oh, you can't see it at all, I apologize. But basically, these little dots are the monitors, ozone monitors, and this one is Cannon's Lane. And what I think is important about this plot is the darker colors indicate large decreases, which is what we want. Importantly, in the vicinity of Cannon's Lane and the heart of Louisville, kind of along the river, that's the river here, that you're seeing that the emissions decreases cause little less ozone reduction than in the corresponding areas. So ozone reductions are not as impactful in the heart of Louisville as they are in the surrounding areas. I think, but I think what I do want to make sure to say is that this 3.8 ppd, kind of keep that in your head, that's kind of the range of about 3 to 4 ppd of ozone reduction attributed to NOX. Now, when we look at VOC, we're looking at the same types of plots, this is our four former domains in Kentucky. What you see is the plot is predominantly white, meaning that ozone reduction is fairly non-responsive to the VOC emission changes. In contrast to the NOX plot, where the NOX peaked in the southern portion, you'll see that the most color you can see is actually in the heart of Louisville. So in Louisville itself is most responsive to VOCs relative to the surroundings, VOC emission reductions relative to the surrounding areas. When you look at the VOC sensitivity plot, here you can see the outline better of where we're at in Jefferson County. Here's Cannon's Lane. The surrounding area is a whiter color, and the most color is in near Cannon's Lane. That means that VOC emission production methods are most effective in that area of Louisville. And the magnitude of those reductions is about 1.3. So in a nutshell, VOC emission reductions are more effective in Louisville relative to NOX, but I guess I want to make sure to say that the overall point is that even though they're more effective compared to the region, they are still overall slightly less effective, about 1 ppd of ozone change, opposed to NOX reductions of about 3 to 4. One last technical slide for you all. When we look at this by day at Cannon's Lane, this line shows the 1 to 1 line. And so what I'm presenting here, these dots, the blue dots are the emission reductions attributed that happen when the NOX emissions change, and the orange dots are the ozone changes, sorry, the ozone changes in response to VOC. So blue is NOX, orange is VOC. Anything less than the 1 to 1 line will decrease. And importantly, most of the orange dots are fairly close to the 1 to 1 line, meaning most of the time ozone is not responsive to VOC emissions. And the NOX, the blue dots are further away, you're getting a bigger emission, ozone reduction for your emission reductions. The exception being, on a few days, there are periods where it flips, and the VOC is more effective than the NOX every few photons. And I think that's really where we have ended this highlighted version of the presentation. If you'd like more information, we'll be presenting a modified version later. Just to recap, we developed an emissions inventory, refined that inventory for this area, the model has got the performance of ozone, and that the regional emissions are most sensitive to NOX emission reduction values for the most of the part, except a few days where they're affected. Nothing.
So when you reduce the level of, did you do 20% or did you vary that number to see if that's acceptable?
No, we only tried that one case of really looking at emission reductions across the board. So not in this plot, but instead of having the red V10, they were like 7.5. So everything would be suppressed right by 25.
Are you feeling that the amount of decrease is critical to the effect?
Definitely. There are non-exists, so if you change that amount, you can get different levels of response. And I think, so if you get 20, so what we're showing here is a 25% NOX decrease is about a 3 to 4 ppd. You can decrease it by 10% on NOX. So if it's not, it's not going to be 1 to 2, yeah, it's not proportional as a rate percent.
So how does the reduction of the 3.8 ppd, how that relative to the limits? Do you see that reduction? Anybody?
The 3-year is 72. So that's for that three-year map.
Standard 7.
We see it at 7. Our modeling, or our monitoring of Cannon's Lane, which is the monitoring for that year, the last year was in the 68 ppd for 2018 season, rolled into that three-year signed by your average. So the reason why we wanted this study is, you know, what we know now about Louisville, we've got a lot of Louisville people, and we're very weather dependent. So how do you manage a very technical standard in light of very complex chemical reaction?
I have a quick question. Could you explain to the group what are the main ingredients that causes formation of ozone?
Absolutely.
We don't have ozone action dates in our data.
Right, right.
Could you explain to the group what is needed, what are the main ingredients that you need?
Yeah, most definitely. So I kind of think of it as three, but so emissions are important, and you focused on that, the VOCs and the NOX, and then also the sunlight is really critical. And so basically, ozone is a both chemically driven reaction. So you don't, so NOX is emitted and VOC is emitted, and what happens is the sunlight activates those chemicals, those compounds, and it excites them, and they have three radical reactions. They like pop off parts, and then there's a chain reaction, such, which is really important, I think particularly for the VOC, because they are so reactive, it attacks one part, and then it becomes a smaller chain. Imagine you have a long chain, and it's broken into two chains, and each of those chains now are still reactive, and so it propagates.
Well, you know, in the summer, we've had a lot of hot summer days with very few ozone action dates.
Yeah.
And it probably has to do with the wind, climate, wind and all that, and this has been quite breezy, you know, the summer, it's been hot.
Yeah, so the third part is that the boundary layer and meteorology are playing a very part, and that it depends on how much sunlight it has to propagate through, because it's sunny in the summer, but if it's very humid, that sunlight doesn't always make it all the way down, it's energy, it's sometimes awkward. And then like you're talking about the breeze in terms of the transport, we saw that plot where the ozone's formed and then is transported away, and I think that's related to that stagnant condition where it allows that the NOX and VOC to be together, build up, and then they react, and then if the breeze comes up, it gets transported, or it can just last. And there were a few events that shortened some of the animations, there were a few events that lasted for several, I want to say three to five days, where you have that stagnant condition, and it will just kind of sit over the area, and then go down in the nighttime, and the sun went down, but the chemicals and compound in the air are still there. And so when the daytime chemistry kicks off, that's still there for the next day.
You know, what's interesting about those charts, we have made a significant reduction in NOX in Jefferson County, but we still are attainment, or we still try to attain.
We are non-attainment for the new ozone standard and 70% of the 30.
So we now attain?
We are non-attainment.
So we have a deadline of the meeting?
We do, and we are in marginal non-attainment, which is the lowest level, or as I believe standard is August of 2020.
Can you also explain the breakdown of it as well, because sometimes that's a formation of it and such, but is it just dissipated, or is it, I mean, does it always exist, and it's, you know, it's a matter of the wind trend when it's going away, because, you know, it goes down at nighttime, but I mean, what happens to the existing amount that's in maintenance?
So you're talking about in the evening, the depletion of that kind of plot where you saw that turn green.
From just the fusion and the...
Yeah, so you can see kind of the green color is lower level of ozone, the ozone highly reactive, and that's part of the reason why, the health concern, and it's reactive in our lungs as well. And so when the absence of sunlight, the ozone is actually depleted, and it disappears, it reacts and forms essentially oxygen and nitrogen dioxide as well.
So it's a reverse reaction?
Exactly, yeah, yeah. So it's a reverse reaction, and then those compounds, they are kind of stick around, and they're still available, so that once the sun comes back up, it kicks off again.
Dr. May, in the presentation that was made in the MultiBlue Stakeholder Group last, well, two weeks ago, Byron Gary included a really nice kind of depiction of that chemical reaction. Those, the presentation that we made is posted on the MultiBlue Stakeholder Group link on our webpage, but I'll also send it out to the board and let you know where to find that in the slide deck. It is an incredibly complex equation. Billy Dewitt is APCD's Director of Air Monitoring and our Meteorologist. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
There's nothing to add. The preliminary data is just that the ozone was even, we were only at 68 for our highest monitor. As to last year, we were at the same monitor, it was 77, part of the wind, which is well over the standard. I think they play a bad, since the meteorology has told you, we had a lot of our hot intense sun days, had higher wind speeds, or higher humidity or both, and both those things play into part of ozone formation, humidity scavengers, ozone, the speed and direction, obviously move precursors out of the areas or not allow ozone to stay around for a longer time.
Any questions?
Do the VOCs and NOX mix between throughout the air column?
For the most part, you know, there are vertical changes in both of those emissions, but it depends on where it's released and the meteorology. But we, the model does a great job. It's actually, a gridded model has labels vertically, so it captures those vertical changes and allows for the emissions to get mixed before monthly and vertically. But there are differences, definitely, it just depends on the day.
I have a few questions. The inventory for the VOCs, is that total VOCs?
Yes.
Is it further broken down?
It is. Yeah, so what we've used is the EPA default etiiation that depends on the industry that's releasing those VOCs, and so it is broken into essentially reactivity-based composition.
I see. So the inventory gives you total VOCs from the nature of the industry around here, do you use EPA profile?
That's the second one.
The 3 and 4 ppd reduction and the 2 ppd reduction, I understand, so that would be on the peak concentration in the highest days of the season.
That's right. The top 10 days, exactly.
The top 10 days.
We look at the top, and that's the average of the top 10 days.
So that's around 70 parts per billion or a little bit above.
Yeah, it can be. So I think probably the best plot to see is, so it peaked out at about 80, 82 to 87 on those peak ones, so it's still there. But of course, it's the sign value, we'll be the fourth highest in the seasons at 1, 2, 3, 4. So your peak values are still, with both emission action cases, using the model setup that we did, they're still above this line of 70. So they were about 72 and 74 roughly, in either of the sensitivity cases. So it still would be pretty unmodelled experience.
I think it'd be interesting to put a mark for the limit on there.
I know, you're right. Oops, when I was just doing that bottom line, that would have been... Oops, when I was just doing that bottom, like that would have been a good addition. So here's 70 and anything about this is above the standard. Yeah.
So in each of the case of VOCs and NOx, you have 25% reduction in the local emissions of that region. Uniformly, and then depending on the potential ex of VOCs, you get a few percent reduction in NOx.
Exactly.
And, and I think I know the answer to this, but you, you didn't try uniformly reducing NOx and VOCs together to 25%.
No, we did not do that type of case.
Yeah, why not?
Um, I think that, you know, we were getting initial results to help inform what you guys would like to look at next. And we didn't know that this wouldn't be sufficient of itself to like show payment. I think this, I think originally we talked about that too. The goals of this study were really just to better understand ozone formation as opposed to control.
So just to address that question a little bit more, if we were to not make that attainment deadline, then we would be required by EDI regulations to be modeling to show what it would take to get us into a team. But prior to that deadline, our goal wasn't too much to see what would get us into a team, like what, what case would get us there. The primary purpose of the study was to understand just which of those generally would be a more effective reduction. So that's something that we may end up having to look at depending on what our ozone is, you know, next year. But just because the goal wasn't necessarily to do that sort of regulatory modeling to demonstrate what would get us into compliance, and just a more general understanding in terms of we aren't required to do that yet.
This is actually a more detailed study of a more, a broader study that's been done in Southeast USA. And as part of that larger study, what they determined was that nitrogen oxide emission really drove ozone formation throughout the Southeast. But they always kind of put a little footnote at the bottom and said, well, Louisville may be a little bit different, and that could be because of the sources that we have here specific to our industry. And so we wanted to kind of better understand at a, sort of 30,000 foot U-level at a, a larger, look at a more refined level, what ozone formation is here in Louisville, what actually drives it. Is it volatile organic compounds or the nitrogen oxide? It's strongly nitrogen oxide and a little bit of volatile organic compounds. So that, that footnote actually was an accurate assessment.
But to what degree, I guess, I mean?
That may be something you know that in the future.
I appreciate that may be different here, but it's vastly different. If I realize that the question wasn't answered or even asked.
I mean, that's show, everywhere else in the Southeast is white on, they basically know benefit for VOC reductions anywhere Southeast.
Right.
So we're different from that, but not vastly different. Or we're not at a where NOx reduction actually the buffer increase to Louisville, except on one or two days, I think, where we said.
There were.
Of course, the strategy of reducing NOx emissions for VOC emissions for both by 25% over the entire region is not really available.
That's true, yeah.
To reduce emissions here. So if you look at just assuming that these emission reductions occur globally, what the regional can say, what's that?
Yeah, so kind of on both of the points, to your first point of what's fail to us, certainly recognize that APCD and the companies that operate here in Jefferson County normally impact emissions here, but we think it's important for us to have that bigger picture because we do have partners that we work with, such as the Division for Air Quality and the Indiana Department of Environment. And so this is great information for us and is going to be a key piece of our emission reduction planning, whether that be in a SIP kind of planning setting or for the local, our own goals going forward. We also know that this is also going to be a very helpful setting for our partners. And so having that wider region view is still important to the conversation we're explaining. To your second question, that is a next step that we're looking at taking from the ball of, what is just one effect of 25% emission reduction in NOx just from the Jefferson County source or the VOCs just from the Jefferson County? 25% being sort of the marker of how responsive will that be? Will that, you know, is that going to get us anywhere? Sort of our first touch screen question. Before we have to get to something more like a fire from this track earlier, it's a more specific refined analysis, the, this is part of our supplemental to EPA. So it's kind of a stage, the, the second question is our, that's our next stage. So that's back to what these initial results has started that conversation. To follow up on Michelle's point of how important this is for our partners, it would be remiss if we didn't know that Deputy Commissioner Sean Lauterri from the Kentucky Energy and Environmental Protection Council is joining us today, and the Director of the Division for Air Quality will join us in the Saturday afternoon. So we really appreciate you all being here and joining us as we do this study and work together as we can. Any other questions?
And you may have already answered this, what we're talking about to the time, this was just more, I'm saying that we're talking about what we have to talk to the area, the ozone, the current area. Would that even count if we find a even more specific areas in this area where emissions are higher that would contribute to that, to VOCs? Would the ozone level actually affect that area more than another area? It may not, I'm just, a little question.
Billy, would any that are able to answer that question about his understanding of ozone formation across the county?
Because secondary to the, the reaction, according to mentioned, a lot of the areas where emissions are highest may not be the area where it ozone forms. Because of the direction of the wind is going to begin forming, the wind usually comes out of the southwest, it'll begin formation there, but really get higher and higher. If that winds in that direction, northeast, we're seeing the highest ozone, so a lot hands on wind direction and the area health.
And thank you. The scientific assessment, while you're making that, you know, that is playing in your role, so there's a discussion when you're discussing, where you're taking that firearm, I think, that's going to give us additional insight into that question, right?
Well, I think you heard very detailed, excellent report.
Yes.
Yes, will the reference documents for Ramball A B and C be publicly available?
Yeah, but we have the publicly available reports, is that what you're going to be asking?
Well, the reference documents that are noted within Ramball A B and C, which are the emissions inventory and information, are those publicly available?
We haven't posted the emissions inventory document yet, but I think at this point it would be, we'd have to have a discussion about that, but I don't see why it would be able to be made available.
All right, and also in converting the annual point source data to shorter term, can you explain the methodology or what you use for the short term?
Absolutely. So the, there's kind of two different buckets of data availability to do what's called taking that annual information and putting it hourly essentially. So one is large facilities with a continuous emissions monitoring system, a SEMS, that, that dataset collects hourly data, hourly emissions. So when SEMS data is available, we use that instead of the annual totals. Other information is used when there's just annual totals. That information is estimated at an hourly level using what's called profiles. So basically, we understand how much people are driving during different periods of the day based on community patterns. And so those day of week and time of day profiles are applied to the data. So it's very general standard default information.
Sure. And now that you replaced the Louisville specific emissions inventory in the EPA database, was that using the 2016 emissions inventory or the 2017 data?
It was the 2016 data that we use from EPA and Louisville Metro, they had 2016 emissions also reported that they, that we used to replace. So it was self-consistent.
And what about all the power plant closures in 2016 and pre-2017, are they in the dataset or in the dataset?
No, so because 2016 was selected, there was a part in this study that we didn't talk about, but it's in the report, that the models compared to actual measurements. And so we use the 2016 emissions that actually occurred in order to make that comparison as apples to apples.
That was a good question, so that would be my next question. Since the power plants have probably closed, and you used the data 2016?
Yes.
And I'm sure we had a tremendous reduction in NOx.
There have been some closures within our region. You know that we also have a number of closures that are beginning to take place, starting in 2020, but extending all the way up ultimately to 2028.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, it's been great to be here today.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, our cross the data enforcement stats report, any questions for any board members on the, the report for the enforcement, access emission events report, any questions? The plant investigation stats report, that's good. And our cross the data PM 2.5 ozone, that's good. All the reports are good, any comments? We do have an announcement from.
I did have one request for clarification because we had a refusal and because the chair needed to vote on the ASRC matter, could I just have a show of hands if we voted for ASRC?
Thank you.
I'd like to, before I adjourn the meeting, I want to thank everyone for your attendance, and we should do a happy and safe Thanksgiving. The meeting is adjourned until December the 18th, thank you again.